I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. If you could please make sure your microphones are turned on. That would be greatly appreciated. Just give it a tap. Or if you want, when you talk, at least reach in and push the button. Okay, call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Asking one last time, is there any public comment? Hearing no public comment, we'll close public comment. Item number four, approve minutes from the July 15, 2014 regular meeting. Could I have a motion to do so?
So move.
Motion by Karen. Second by Paul. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
The chair votes aye, motion passes 4-0-1. Please note Anne Marie's abstention. Item number five, first selectmen's report. I'll do the first selectmen's report a little bit different. I'm just going to give you some information tonight that we're going to need in other sections. So Roy should have handed you a packet that has the capital plan. It has our fund balance, and then it has a bunch of pages on debt service. They should have all been put together. We'll start with the capital plan funding first. As you know, we've talked about the capital plan in recent weeks, recent months, I should say. I made a few changes to the current budget section that I just wanted to go over with some of you. Some things that the board has voted for and approved, and I wanted to make sure that they were properly included. So if you can look to the middle column on the current budget, you'll notice that the Paul Pollock Memorial Stone has been added. We're budgeting $2,500 for that. I hope it will come in less than that. We're hoping to order that stone tomorrow. I've also added $7,500 in for painting for town halls. As you can see, we've started the project. If any of you have been upstairs, you know that we've done some substantial painting. The problem is, it now makes the areas that were not painted look even worse. So we're getting quotes for all of the offices and the meeting rooms. And then again, the rest of it is the same with the exception of the parking lot next to the Fish Bypass, which is the gravel lot where the postal employees park. In conversations with Chuck Lee and the folks from Mastabatisto, we're going to have that lot done. Now whether it's going to be fit into and paid for by the state, we don't know yet. But Mastabatisto will be giving us the same price that they're giving to the state, which is substantially cheaper than what we would pay if we were to go out on this. So we may be incurring this cost. So I put the $20,000 in there as a placeholder. Other things to note in the low SIP column, the $26,000 for the ADA upgrades. We expect those to be starting in the next two weeks. And then also, we're going to do some brickery pointing to Citizens Engine, particularly with regards to the historic bell tower. I wanted to go over that real quickly. But again, we're going to stay within the funding parameters that we had set up and established. Page two talks about our fund balance. As you know, fund balance has been something that we have been pushing for quite some time. These are the unaudited numbers. But this is where Doug and Tony project us to be. They're projecting a surplus this year of $148,353.48. Putting that money to our fund balance would push our fund balance, as you can see, to $4,540,305.46. We had set a floor for our fund balance of seven and a half percent. With these numbers, we're about $461,000 above that. I'm going to recommend, once we have the audited numbers, that we increase that floor from seven and a half percent to eight percent. Obviously, our financial advisors would like us to get above 10, but we need to keep chipping away. Later on in the meeting, we're going to talk a little bit about the strategic planning initiative, so we'll talk a little bit more in depth on that. I mean, if anybody has a question, if I'm going too fast, just stop me. And then the final thing, you're going to see three debt service projections. I'd like everyone to focus on the one that just says, it kind of looks like this. Just says fiscal town debt and decreases. The other two are projections for our road program. So I wanted you to see how those work. Now, as you know, we did some refunding, some of our debt, and at the same time, we also brought new debt in. We had $3,460,000 of additional debt that we did bond. That had to do with the Chaffey-Lopresti School, as well as the out-of-cycle purchases we made in October of 2011. So including that extra $3.4 million into this bonding, we're going to save about $450,000 worth of interest over the next five years. We've been able to smooth out years where there was projected to be spikes or increases in our principal and interest payments. So you can see, for the foreseeable future, we will have decreases in what we'll pay in debt service. We still have protected the 2017-2018 year where we'll see a decrease of $721,000, and the year 2021 where we'll see the almost $1.2 million. These, this refunding has given us tremendous financial flexibility going forward. So instead of having to worry about out years where there'll be increases in our debt service, very similar to what the state's going through, we're not going to have those problems, thankfully. So in conversations with our financial advisors, they are very happy with the progress that we're making and how we're moving forward. When I started the discussion about the road program with them, they took that into account, and we're very happy to see that. Now, the other two ones that you have. The first one I'd like you to look at is debt service with road debt. Did anyone see that? If we were to move forward with our road program as presented, what we had talked about at our last meeting, we borrow about $5.3 million because we need an additional $300,000 for lawyers' fees and bond fees and so on and so forth. You can see how putting that debt on immediately would impact. So in next year, instead of having a decrease in our debt service, we'd actually have an increase of $100,000, and then you can see how it would fall every year after that. That's not the way that I would recommend we did it. If you look to the next page, where it talks about debt service with road debt deferred for two years, we would use bands for a two-year period. And you could see 2015, this year would stay the same. 2016 would stay relatively the same. There'd be a drop of about $13,000 in our savings. 2017, we'd go from a slight positive, about $128, to a negative of $5100, so not anything bad. Where it would impact us is in that 17-18 year. Instead of having close to $800,000, we'd only have about $444,000. So we're going to have options. We don't have to make any decisions tonight on this. These are things I just want you to start thinking about. If we move forward with the road program, and I think we're all comfortable doing that, and the voters approve it at referendum in November, we wouldn't be having these discussions until next year at this time as to how we're going to pay for this debt that we're going to take on. But again, I wanted to introduce it to you, just to give you a time to think about. When that time comes, I'll sit down with the treasurer, we'll go through a plan, and we'll present it at that point. Any questions on this? Again, I know it's a lot of information in a short period of time, but I just wanted to put it out there. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Town Council? Actually, I found my notes in the last two budget presentations, which are kind of fun to go back and read. Okay, sorry. Item number six, discussion, take possible action on George J. Hummel Little League tax abatement. In your packets, you all have a letter. It's the Board of Selectmen. Dear Board members, the George J. Hummel Little League is requesting the Board of Selectmen to waive the payment of taxes in the amount of $6,028.48 for property at Cassagran Field, as you have in the past. The property was donated to the Little League by the Cassagran family with the clause that if the league should dissolve, the property would revert back to the family. Because of this clause, the Little League property has been taxed. Thank you for your consideration respectfully, Bill Regani, who is the president. So again, you can see their tax bill. This is something that we have done many, many years in a row. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to waive the tax bill for Cassagran Field for the George J. Hummel Little League in the amount of $6,028.48.
So move.
Whoa.
Everybody.
Everybody. Motion by Nicole, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda discussion of possible action regarding the VEMS contract. I have a motion to do so. Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, excuse me, opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda, discussion of possible action regarding the VEMS contract. At our last meeting, we had a conversation with Executive Director Patnella, who's in the back, Scott Andrews, who is the president of their Board of Directors. And I thought it was a very good discussion. We all seemed very comfortable with the idea of moving forward with a contract for VEMS. We did have a few questions raised by several of the members. So Rich and I did meet with Bob and Scott. We think we've ironed out all of those issues, and we've all agreed on them. What you have in front of you would be the updated contract. So I'm going to give Bob a chance just to say a few words, and then Rich, a few words, and at that point, we'll take it from there. So Bob, anything you want to add, other than what you've said in the past? Any questions for, just for Bob? He may have questions for Rich and I. But any questions for Bob? Rich, anything you'd like to add or address?
We've changed things that have reached out to the last meeting. I thought it came out of this firm. It does. It is a simple contract, they're vaying the TSAR. You're happy with your service. This is an improvement for both their agency and the town. If you have a written document, I recommend.
Any questions of myself or Town Council? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to allow me to sign the agreement between the Town of Seymour and the Valley Emergency Medical Services Incorporated as presented. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Bob will get this signed tomorrow, and then we'll run it down to the office. And then you can sign it, we'll make copies, we'll be all set. Perfect, thanks, Bob. Okay, item number seven, discussion, take possible action on VISION's reevaluation contract. It's that time again where the Town of Seymour will be going through its reevaluation. I asked our assessor, Joe Kuziac, to go through the process of looking for vendors to do that. He has gone through that process. He's worked with Rich on this, so I'll ask Rich to chime in in a minute. But VISION is a very prominent player in this field. They've done work in Seymour for a few times. So this is who Joe is recommending that we move forward with? I know he did spend some time working with Rich on the contract. So Rich, are there any comments you'd like to make?
VISION appraisal was one of the, VISION Government Solutions Corporation, one of the largest and best-known companies in this field. They are involved with the overwhelming majority of the medical municipalities. Joe is very happy with their service. I've worked with them in the past through a number of wins. They're very professional. At my request, I've made some changes to the contract, including adding, the, they've got seven and eight governing laws, and some of the government laws in the state. Medical, state, not student. This, that, any dispute can be heard and considered for this. This is a good, because they only have a very strong waiver of 1008. We agreed to make those changes. So again, with this, Joe is very pleased with it, and I would recommend that the town employees stop. They're authorized to, first of all, to enter the contract on the opportunity.
Any questions? Just one comment. As you know, we've been encumbering money. In the 2013-2014 budget, we put away $33,000. In this current budget, we have another $33,000 budgeted. The contract is calling for an amount of $84,600, so we will need to make one more payment of $18,600 in the 15-16 budget. So we've been planning very well for this. So actually, we'll be able to reduce the budget slightly next year to accommodate that. So if there's no questions or comments at this point, I will entertain a motion to allow the first selectmen to sign the contract for reappraisal and reevaluation of taxable real and exempt property located within the corporate limits of the Town of Seymour by VISION Government Solutions Incorporated of Massachusetts. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda, discussion, take possible action on ConDOT Master Municipal Agreement for Rights of Way projects. As you know, we discussed this at our last meeting. Rich did send, excuse me, Town Council Patralla did send a letter to the Director of Rights of Way, the Bureau of Engineering Instruction for the Department of Transportation. Rich, if you haven't heard anything back from them as of yet?
We haven't heard anything back yet. I think it's probably going to be by December, September.
Okay, so at this point, we should hold off until we hear back at least on that. Okay. All right, so since we have no new action, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to postpone our decision on the Master Municipal Agreement for Rights of Way projects to our September 2, 2014 meeting. Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda discussion, possible action regarding Smoke in the Valley Cares Food Truck Event. I have a motion to do so. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda, discussion of possible action regarding Smoke in the Valley Cares Food Truck Events. Mr. Brunson?
I'm going to go by, go through and say hello to everyone individually. No, I didn't see. So I think I've copied my email in front of you, so go over that. Smoke in the Valley is returning for its fourth year now on October 4, and the Seymour Pink Heat Race, the five Ks. I think it's third year, which is pretty cool as well. We combine these two events, and they're really one magnificent day for the Town of Seymour. The money raised from both those events goes right back to numerous groups and individuals right here in town. This year, SITV was planning that on a second dated event. Initially, our hope of the second date was to help the great operating cost of the first day cost over $40,000 last year. We're running out of that. We give minimal sponsorship back in front. So everything basically comes from paid sales, moving generally. However, during the planning of that second day, one of our tradition board members suddenly passed away. And from that tragic passing of our friend, we had a decision to create SITV Cares. The goal of SITV Cares would be to donate profits from that first night. We'd like to make this an annual event, add a second day going forward. The goal will be to donate the money to individual, individuals, groups, organizations in the valley that are in need of financial assistance. Our goal this year's inaugural event is to give the profits from that night to our county department. In subsequent years, we'll have an application process to go through, and we'll have a committee that will decide who's getting the funds. It could be more than one brewery potentially, if they can get the funds from subsequent funds. This event is a lot different than Smoke in the Valley in that, as Kurt mentioned, it's going to be involving food trucks, not a massive amount of breweries we have for Smoke in the Valley. We'll have 15 to 20 food trucks onsite. We'll also have, be selling beer and potentially wine, just on the infield. We'll have folks to bring the chairs down and hang out. We tend to have a few groups lined up to play that event already. Might as well do a little self-promotion here, a little peep, as well as riders and new curbs say, if they're lined up for that inaugural event for us. So it's pretty good stuff. Won't be shutting down any streets for that. It's just going to take place in the community center parking lot. You know, the one nice thing that we looked at is all the assets that we even fancy, sort of times, all that good stuff. Comes in on Friday morning anyway for us. So we already have all the assets in place between the event that day. As I said, we're not shutting down any streets for it. The big stuff's in for perhaps for the road, for parking. Security will work through, security will work through, work with Seymour PD. You know, it's just security needs for that night. We will have temporary lighting in place as well, to ensure the safety of everyone who's down there. I think that's pretty much it with regard to what the event is going to comprise. Did you guys have some questions? If I'd occurred, I know you might have had a few questions for us.
Yeah, I have a couple. Just where will the money raised come from? So will you charge admission, or will the food truck be giving, you know, 10% of sales? Or how will that work?
Nope, not at all. So we won't have a flat fee for food trucks to come in there. I believe, I believe $1.25, $1.50 if you're doing both Friday and Saturday for the food trucks. $1.25 suggested in Friday. That should take care of our costs. At this point, with $10,000 in on music, and have $0.00 sponsors, we're funding all that. Our sales basically run out. And then there will be a $25 incentive pricing.
So as a participant, I guess, I would pay $25 to come in, and then I would just buy my food as I came in?
Buy your food when you came in there. Again, the 15 to 20 food trucks onsite, including a cupcake truck, which I certainly prefer. So you know, there's got to be some really nice food down there, some desserts down there. Everyone who comes in can choose what they have. We won't allow, for a few different reasons, we won't allow you to bring outside food. If you want to bring waters, we'll let them bring the waters. Say outside door, they put size, constraint on the size of food that you can bring in there. We won't let anyone bring outside alcohol.
Any age limit?
No age limit. In terms of security for purpose sake, if you want to purchase an alcoholic beverage down there, we'll have an ID check in. We'll wristband everybody. And of course, when they come through, if you don't like your age, we'll ID you again.
Okay, so similar to the Founder's Day?
Exactly.
Parking, parking is obviously an issue with Smoke in the Valley and some of the other events downtown. I know we just had a quick conversation. You guys would be open to the concerns of the downtown merchants with regards to parking?
Yeah, 100%. We love to work with them and get groups more involved in the events we do down here. We think it's key to have everyone in town support us. From our standpoint, I think we're delivering some potential customers down here for them as well. So I hope they're open to working with us and get those concerns addressed.
Would you, I know you're working very hard to secure parking in the industrial park for Smoke in the Valley and the road race. Would you have that as well, Friday night with shuttles potentially?
We'd love to. The other thing that, you know, we haven't done yet, we'd like to contact James regarding deep parking behind stop shuttles. We open that up as well. I don't know if the road would be an option for Friday night. You know, it is for Saturday. We're also contacting you right apart there. But we're definitely opening shuttles to get that night, for both nights. We want to leave as much trapped down here as we possibly can and hopefully deliver some walking traffic.
Have you had any communication yet with the police department for approvals or anything, or no?
Initial, we've had initial discussions with them, so they're aware that we're, you know, we put this together. But we haven't, we haven't approached them for final audit. We just got our information, the paperwork lined up right now to get approval done for the liquor license. So that will be contingent to their approval, since they have to sign off. I will be potentially trying to come in a week forward for containing the liquor.
And where do you see this going in the future?
I think, you know, I think, I know there's been some, I'm babbling, I just spent four days with the vibes. Strike that from the record.
Yeah.
The, I think it's got a great potential. I know there's been some talk of converting that to a town parade down there. Ideally, what I'd like to do is work with town, do some other events down there. Perhaps whether it's going back to the art council in town, or, you know, other nonprofit groups in town. I think there's, I think it's a great venue down there. We've seen what it produces from the other events that have been done. And we've seen what it's really untapped gem to do events like this. So in addition to the Smoke in the Valley, I'd love to do some additional events with you guys. Great future, I think. With the support of everyone in here, I think it's a great future.
Okay, what questions?
This will be on, again, this is Friday.
This is Friday night, yeah.
And then Smoke in the Valley will be on Saturday.
Will be on Saturday, correct. Yep.
Karen, Paul?
It's great.
Anne Marie, any?
I guess, yeah, I guess my only concern is the same as yours with parking, the parking issues.
We really need to get together overall with parking. I think that if we do that, we can get more people into this event. Some of the feedback I've even gotten from the consumers who go there is the parking. One thing we haven't done well in the past is given enough direction on our website or even the day of, where can you park? So that just creates a nightmare. And that's one thing we plan on addressing, the signs at the exits of October date, and putting on our website as well. You know, with GPS coordinates nowadays, you can program everything in there. So you just copy it right on to the website, put it in your GPS, anything live. So that's really what we want to do about it. We try and get better each year. Unfortunately, I say unfortunately, all of us are doing this basically from a point of view to our car during our day job. I'm scared, you know, taking, taking time to do this when we should be working on something else. So I think we've gotten better every year, but I think working with most of you guys and with their rest together, the town reserves will make it even better.
We did do a nice debrief after last year's events. And we identified a lot of the problems or concerns that were raised by people. So we're definitely more aware of those, particularly the downtown merchants. One of the things that we're talking about is actually closing downtown, not, well, closing it to traffic. So we would have the sawhorses up, maybe it's our cert team, maybe it's Smoke in the Valley volunteers, but they would ask the people, why do you want to come downtown? Is it, you're here to shop? Well, then they can certainly come in and park. If it's, you know, three 25-year-old guys, obviously they're here to drink beer and eat chili, then they'll be directed to the appropriate places. So we want to be aware of what's going on to allow our merchants to stay active and have, I guess, some protection as well.
You know, I think the other thing too, isn't there a parking limit, time limit downtown?
Yeah.
So I think the other thing is, you know, we could do that end.
Could have.
Because every 25-year-old guy's got the same down here, to shop at the store when they see the distance a lot. Just to make sure that we put up signs that they know that it's going to be enforced, and then enforce it as well, to make sure that they're not falling down the streets.
I think too, I think Matt would agree, the biggest mistake we made was not properly parking on River Street last year.
I think we parked like four and a half cars in there.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely missed the vote on that. And again, they're working on shuttle buses up and down to the industrial parks, so there's certainly good things. Nicole, did I cut you off on something?
No, you answered it.
Oh, I'm sorry. So Rich, from a legal standpoint, what do they need? What do we need to do? What do we need to do? What do we need to do?
Well, I encourage them to, uh, find, uh, the stuff, the firm, the, uh, 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 the, uh,[378.11]